Exactly.
Exactly.
Good evening. Good evening. This is the city council meeting at the city of Avon Lake. And can we all rise while Mr. Zuber leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the glory of our Christian stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Rossman, please read the roll.
Mr. Arnold.
Here.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Here.
Ms. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Cos.
Here.
Mr. Shamir.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Zuber.
Here.
Mayor Spetzl.
Here.
Law Director Ebert.
Here.
Finance Director Crossy.
Here.
Public Works Director Liskovic.
Here.
Thank you. We're all here, so we have a quorum. And the next item is the appointment of Police Sergeant. Mr. Zuber, in just a moment. Mrs. Rossman, could you please read ordinance number 2551 by title only?
An ordinance confirming the appointment of Jared Nyswander as Sergeant in the Police Department and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zuber.
I move for the suspension of the council rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rossman, the roll.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Thank you. It's passed. Mr. Zuber?
I move for passage of ordinance number 2551.
In discussion.
This is the appointment of Jared Nyswander as a Sergeant in the Police Department. I believe that the mayor has some comments about this promotion.
Thank you, Mrs. Zuber. We have Jared Nyswander here with his family and a lot of other police officers. It's good to see the turnout we have here. Jared was hired by the city of Avon Lake in April of 2019. He came to Avon Lake with eight prior years of law enforcement experience from the city of Lorain. He served 10 years at the Ohio National Guard and was deployed in Iraq for 14 months during Operation Iraqi Freedom from 2004 to 2006, and we thank you for your service there as well. Jared was assigned to the Detective Bureau in 2023. He has also served as a field training officer for many of the newly hired officers. A field training officer is often a great training opportunity, and it bodes well, if you do well there, to become a Sergeant, because it's many of the same type of duties and responsibilities. Jared passed the Sergeant promotional test with a score of 90.47, which is very high in a very competitive market, so it's a well-deserved promotion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rossman?
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Thank you. It's passed. Now we have the swearing-in ceremony. Mr. Mayor?
You can come up here if you'd like, if it's better for you. All right. We're good? Okay. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jared Nyswander.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Avon Lake.
The laws and ordinances of the city of Avon Lake.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of Sergeant.
Discharge the duties of Sergeant.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
During my continuance at said position.
During my continuance at said position.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, we give one minute. Round of applause for Jared.
I'm sure that all of you have something a little bit more fun to do in another location. Thank you for coming down this evening and supporting him. Okay, we're going to move on to the approval of the minutes. We actually have two minutes. We're going to be talking about January 13, 2025. Have you all had a chance to review it? Are there any changes, additions? Seeing none, they will stand as published. How about January the 27th, 2025? You've had a chance to review them? Any changes or deletions? Seeing none, they will stand as published. Thank you. Mrs. Rossman, is there any correspondence?
I don't have any to report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to go into reports. Oh, yes, sir. Oh, Mr. Shamir.
Yes. I have some correspondence. I have received a number of complaints from residents in the West Winds about the condition of the roads on Trade Winds Drive, Bayview Drive, and West Winds Drive. And what it seems like, I've driven through there, and it seems like that a lot of the patchwork have come off during the winter. And not only that, it seems like that the plow edges have kind of removed what there were, what patchwork was there, as well as some of the concrete that was there to be patched. So it literally, when you walk through those, drive through those streets, you fall into potholes, and if we can take a look at those and put them on a priority, would be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely. If you wouldn't mind, shoot me that list of streets, so I make sure we take them all.
Sure thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up, Mr. Shamir, and thank you for the follow-up, Mr. Liskovic. Okay, yes, Mr. Shamir.
Yes, I did get an email from Bob Gornell regarding the condition of Chancellor Court. I did pass that on to John, I think. Did you get it?
Yes, sir, I did get it.
All right, thank you.
It's on my list.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Shamir.
After Mrs. Shamir.
But Mr. Shamir, why don't you finish what you were saying earlier?
I also received another message today about Liberty Rose. As of March 9th, there was a video that I received that the vehicles are bypassing the blockade on Liberty Rose and traversing the people's yard. Going around. So I do have that video, and I can forward it to you. So I think the resident has also been in touch with Mr. Liskovic as well. Thank you.
Mr. Shamir, are these construction vehicles or are these residential personal vehicles?
Well, this looks like a personal vehicle. I am not sure if it's a construction-related or a resident within the area, but it is an SUV-looking vehicle that is transiting through the person's yard.
Unfortunately.
Thank you.
Thank you. Unfortunately. Ms. Gentry?
Yep, I've received some communication about Surry Lane from multiple people on that road. I know the mayor and Mr. Liskovic are already aware of the issue, but I did want to mention that.
Right, and I also sent Mr. Liskovic a street in my ward, too, that needs to be reviewed. This time of year, with a lot of the fall, the freezing in the fall, and then the salt, and then the ice blades, there is going to be changes. And I'm so glad that the public, those that are here and also at home, respond to the council members and let us know what is going on in your neighborhood. Thank you so much. We're going to be going into reports now, and during the reports, if there's anything that requires a suspension of the rule, if the councilperson could please describe why it has to go for suspension of the rule during the report time. The very first report is from the mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Few items. First, I want to let everybody know, I know with this crazy weather, we're not really thinking about going swimming, but the pool passes went on sale March 1st, and they're very popular items. I just want to let everybody know about that. I also want to let everybody know about our Veterans Banner Program. We have some limited availability on our banners that you'll see on 83 and Lake Road. There's a couple of spaces that are available. These banners go up Memorial Day and stay up through Veterans Day. There's applications available through our Recreation Department, and you can choose to have them up for one season or two seasons. So if you're interested in having one of your family members put up on the Veterans Banner Program, please get that application and get it filled out. It probably will go as a first-gone, first-served, so we encourage you to do that early. I want to follow up on some of our Avon Lake High School Scholar Athletes. You may have heard, I don't know, maybe, maybe not, that our girls' basketball team won on Sunday. They're moving on to the state Division III finals this Friday in Dayton. I think we're going to see a pretty large caravan going down there Thursday night and Friday, which is great to see. Encourage everybody to do that if they can and support our girls' basketball team. It's the first time, I think, since 1994 they've been in the state finals. Also want to highlight our girls' wrestling had three go-to-state. Rajan Alhachish placed sixth, Destiny Cabot placed fourth, and Mallory Zadel also made it to the states. Our boys' wrestling, we had one go-to-state with a couple alternates, and Jack Valerino placed eighth for the boys' wrestling. So they're, again, just doing a tremendous job, our Scholar Athletes. I also want to mention again that we have a tax levy renewal on the May ballot. This 1.5 renewal levy brings in just over $1 million to our general fund. This money is used to provide our police, fire, and infrastructure services in the community. It is not a tax increase. You will see the same amount on your tax bill that you see now. We'll have more additional information coming up throughout the weeks, and as we mentioned at the State of the City. So speaking of State of the City, this Wednesday at 7:00 at the Avon Lake Public Library, I'll be presenting a State of the City. We will have our department directors there as well. Some of them will be speaking. I think it's important for everybody in the community to meet our leadership team and be able to ask those questions, and not only of myself, but those directors. Lastly, I want to thank my family, friends, colleagues, acquaintances, and in many cases strangers, for the humbling and overwhelming support that I have received through calls, text messages, emails, and in person over the last few weeks and months. I just want to let everybody know, I greatly appreciate the support and the kind words from everybody. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mayor? Many one up here? Okay, we're going to move on then to the city council report, and I'm going to jump on to what the mayor had to say in that the state of the city, I'm inviting and encouraging all of my fellow colleagues to be there, and if you could be in the back, so that we can have the public be up front, so that they can hear what is going on. And we are going to be available to any questions that any of the residents may ask afterward or during. That would be great. Along with the council president's report, I wanted to mention that the next CCM is going to be March the 17th, yes, the St. Patrick's Day, at 7:00 p.m. And the city council meeting, where there will be voting, will be March the 24th at 7:00 p.m., again, in these chambers. Chapter 220 and the final reviews will be going in on the 19th. And I've heard from all the council people that they are available to begin that meeting at 7:00 p.m. Is that correct? Yes. Everyone?
Yes.
Very good. We're all on the same page. Very good. Okay, thank you. We're going to go on now to the, any questions for the council president, first of all? All right, we're going to go on now to the law director. You have a report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we do. We had, as everybody knows, we had a hearing last week in probate court on a complaint filed against Mayor Spetzl. I'm glad to indicate that the judgment entry was entered today, and it indicated the cause came on before the court. Upon a verified motion to dismiss by the city of Avon Lake Law Director for one lack of subject matter jurisdiction, hearing and a motion was held on March 4, 2025. For the reasons that follow, the court grants the motion to dismiss, and the complaint for removal of the public officer is hereby dismissed. And I think this serves to confirm and protect the Home Rule and Charter cities, so I'm glad that that ruling came about, and we move forward accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the law director? Mr. Cos, yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Fenderbosh. Mr. Ebert, I want to thank you. I want to thank you and the staff with your firm that assisted with this, and Mr. Kevin Baker from McDonald, Mr. Kevin Butler from McDonald Baker for assisting in the defense of this case. And what you guys were able to do, and as you said, this was a win for Home Rule. This was a win for our charter. This was a win for our votes. So I know you won't say it, so I'm going to say it for you, that the city really owes you a debt of gratitude, Mr. Ebert, for your work on this, and the mayor as well, too. You know, the mayor's got 40 years of public service. Police officer, city councilman, now the mayor, elected again, 70%, nearly 70% of the vote. Over 8,000 people voted for him overwhelmingly in the last election. What he has had to go through in the last week, for sure, but prior to that as well, it's embarrassing. This story was picked up by people all over the country. I know the council president said that she was getting messages from people that were seeing this in all different parts of the country, and people saying, "What the hell is going on in Avon Lake?" And when you try to explain it to them, they are saying, "No way, that cannot be happening." And I said, "This is what is happening here." So I am very, very grateful for Judge Walther and his decision. That court decision, and I read it through, doesn't sound like there's a lot of wiggle room on that. It was decisive, and it was a win for Home Rule, and it was a win for the charter. Now, I do hope that the eight individuals that brought this case forward in opposition of the 8,000 that voted for the mayor would see this decision as a point of inflection and say, "This decision did not go our way. Let's leave it alone. The court spoke overwhelmingly. The people do not support it. This is not the proper way to remove an elected official." It's very clear from that. So that's my hope. I think we're going to hear later tonight that there's going to be an appeal, and this is going to go on, and we're going to spend more money, and we're going to spend more time. So I'm disappointed in that. I hope I'm wrong, but I think that's where we're going tonight. And we'll, just as we did in the Alps lawsuit, you know, we'll defend the city. We were successful in that through the appellate court, all the way up to the Supreme Court. And I know that we have other cases pending with the same individuals, and I am confident that we are going to be successful in those, too. But, Mr. Mayor, you owe it an apology, I think, from those folks that did this. It's embarrassing that this is what this breakdown has come to do. This unprecedented 1871 law, which the court said, again, overwhelmingly, there's no jurisdiction for it, there's no finding for that. You owe it an apology. You're not going to get it, but I just want to let you know that the public supports you, Mr. Mayor. And again, we're grateful for the law team that you've surrounded yourself with. And I hope that this city could now see, you know, some of the things that have been going on in these meetings every Monday, and the long-term damage it could cause. So, thank you again, and thank you for your service, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Anyone else on council? As council president, what I would like to say is that the judge summed it up by saying what he said, so that he could preserve, not only in Avon Lake, but in every other city, your vote, your vote, so that a small group of people cannot take your vote away from them. In charter communities, we have, within our charter, ways that the public could remove an elected official through recall and by signing, you know, a petition to have them removed. There are ways within our charter, but not through the courts, to have eight individuals remove the vote of over 8,000. So thank you for your service, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Law Director, with your guidance and with your ability to work with the other law firm to put together our defense, because it's really the defense of all the voters within Avon Lake. Thank you.
Madam President, just could I add one more thing? Just following up with your comments, one of the lines that I thought was really perfect that the law director included in his last filing included a very simple sentence, but I think sums it up. "Our government is a system of checks and balances, not a tyranny of a vocal minority." And I'm glad the court agreed.
Yes. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move on now to the finance director. Thank you. Do we have a report?
Thank you. I have nothing tonight, other than we will be talking about the fire truck bonds a little later.
Thank you. Any questions for the finance director? All right, we're going to move on to the public works director.
Yeah, good evening. I have a pan full of updates this evening. First, I wanted to just rea-, or to express that yard waste collection did resume March 1st. That's our contract with Kimball. So yard waste has, should have, residents should be putting out for their yard waste and such through the rest of this month, and obviously through the rest of the season. Additionally, I wanted just to confirm that the city was awarded the designation of Tree City USA. Again, I believe this marks 33 years. And also, we were also designated a growth award for efforts to improve our management of trees, whether it's through tree commission actions or through activities we conduct throughout the city, that we're able to be awarded that.
This is our third year for that, by the way.
Yes, correct. Next up is, we will be hosting a young tree training seminar put on by the Ohio Department of Natural Resources this Thursday. It's comprised of half-a-day classroom activity and a half-day field activity. We had 30 eligible spots for participants, and we filled up within less than 24 hours of it being put out to the public. We'll have eight of our own staff participating in this event. So we've selected a street that has qualifying trees, and all those residents are going to receive a door hanger, just kind of giving them some information. We'll be out there Thursday afternoon, or I should say that the team will be out there Thursday afternoon, and then we'll be around Friday to collect any debris that was generated from the pruning activities. Next up, I wanted to just start off with some Columbia Gas work that's going to be coming up in the Belmar, Curtis, Lake Road, Redwood area. This was, we had a site visit about a week and a half ago with Columbia Gas, just discussing the project. It's part of their main replacement program that they do frequently throughout various communities. They're still in some development phases with this, but I just wanted to get that information out so that if we start seeing, I believe, Miller Pipeline, it will be the company they're going to designate for the work. But if we, residents start seeing them in the area, obviously, we're just, Columbia Gas is gathering data for that project. As in past, Columbia Gas will handle all notifications to all impact residents directly, you know, via door hangers and door-to-door communications. And then I did receive some of the promotional information to review late this afternoon, which if it passes a review and stuff like that, we'll get it posted to the website also. Next up, just an update on Alps. So Phase 1 construction is underway. Contractor's working on seat walls currently. Phase 2, we had a pre-bid meeting today with some of the plan holders. It was a mandatory one, but we did have some plan holders come in. Spent about 45 minutes asking questions on the project, which was very productive and positive. Looking for bid opening a week from this Thursday. So looking to review that and get back to council with a recommendation on contractor award and how the bidding process went. Next item is just a quick update on the roads program. As weather is breaking, the concrete streets program, contractor has been back mobilized, working on catch basin boxouts. We're looking to get revised schedules from both contractors, obviously, as projects didn't complete before the winter shutdown area. And just to get a kind of final path to the end of when we can expect them both to be out of, projects to be completed and them out of the city. And then, let's see here, just a last update on the city hall project. As we are rounding Third and heading towards Home with that project, we're working on getting some of the offices back together. There are still some minor details and stuff like that that the contractor is still working through, but we're starting to get people back into their homes and getting a sense of organization back into that area of the building. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Liskovic? Mr. Cos?
Yeah, thank you. I was going to mention this during Ms. Gentry's report, but since, John, since you brought up the Columbia Gas issue, I just wanted to state, I probably also could have brought this up during the correspondence, but, and I don't remember if I sent you the email on this, John. I will, I'll double-check, and if I didn't, I'll send it to you tonight. But I got a call from a resident in the Charleston area, just off of Moore Road, that there was a gas smell that they'd noticed for a while. The one house there on the corner of Charleston and Moore, and there was a few other houses as well, too, that were noticing it, where they contacted Columbia Gas. Columbia Gas came out, acknowledged, yes, there is a, there is a gas smell there. They called it a low-grade leak, and it really wasn't a high priority. Anytime I smoke, we're trained that if you smell gas, it's an issue. Right, it's a high priority. But in the gas world, this wasn't a high priority. They knew that they had something to fix. But I'm happy to report that when I talked to Mr. Carson, was his name?
Mr. Cutler.
Mr. Cutler. Mr. Cutler. When I talked with him, they were originally going to do this project nine months from now. But, you know, hearing the concerns that I was raising from the residents and that the fact that that's a walking area to the schools, Westview right nearby and all of that, they moved that project up, and they're going to be doing that before the end of this month. So that's great news. So thank you, Amy, for... So, thank you, Amy, for getting that information. I will forge that email, and they'll be putting out the information as well, too. But I wanted to keep you in the loop on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Liskovic?
I have a question. The work on Walker Road, where they found the older sewer, how did that resolve over in front of Aviant?
I have, do not have the CCTV data back. That was, they were out Friday doing that, so I have not, we haven't received that back from the contractor.
They were fully mobilized there with multiple trucks.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you'll let us know when you get the information back?
Oh, absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move along now to standing committees. The first one is Building Utilities with Ms. Gentry.
Building and Utilities will be meeting next Wednesday, March 19th at 6:00 PM. We're going to be continuing the demolition ordinance. Hopefully, that will be wrapped up next week and also reviewing the coal yard stormwater connection. Hopefully, that one will also be wrapped up by the, Mr. Liskovic, by the end of next week, maybe, hopefully.
We're working towards it. I can't make promises right now, but working towards it.
Okay.
In a good, positive manner.
Making progress.
Yep.
Any questions for Ms. Gentry, from our colleagues? Okay, then we'll move on then to Mr. Shamir with Communications, Environmental, and Recreational Programming.
There are two items within CRP. First one, Mr. Liskovic addressed, was the Alps update. And the second, it's, there's going to be a motion later on tonight with resignation from EAB. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Shamir? Seeing none, we're going to move on then to Mr. Arnold with Economic Development.
Thank you. No report tonight.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Arnold? All right, we're going to move on to Mr. Zubor with Finance.
Thank you, Madam President. We did have a finance meeting last Monday here in the council chambers. We talked about the owner's rep for the fire station. To go out for an RFQ on that, I would ask that that would be added to the CCM next week for further discussion. Talked about fees for the body and dash cams from the police department. That, we'll be looking at doing more of that in April. They are investigating more about that. The procurement policy, I will be meeting with the mayor on the procurement policy to iron out any differences that may be there. We went over the financials for January. We do have a transfer on for Alps, and this is the second reading, and that will be a suspension of the rule. That is ordered summer 2555. It came out of the committee as a transfer at the request of the Finance Director. We also talked about the bond sale for the fire trucks. That is on for first reading this evening, and that is the last piece of legislation. I think it's all at everybody's desk. And talked a little bit about the tax refund that we had been paying back, and that we got some good news about that, that we were concerned about in budget time, but it's been cleared up. I talked about the Alps transfer. We also have the Village Project on, a donation of $10,000. That's for first reading this evening, and that, there's a change from eight, we talked about 8,000 at the committee meeting, and it was, the request was for 10,000. So the legislation has been updated to 10,000. We were going to have some more discussion on that at the collective committee meeting. We have for the suspension of the rule ordinance 2546, 47, and 48, as per conversations that I had with the judge, she has put on an order for this to go into effect April 1st. We talked about the transfers. The other stuff is for HR that I have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Zubor, my colleagues? Seeing none. Mr. Zubor, would you like to take the HR, since you were there for Mr. Smith?
Sure. We did have an HR committee meeting this evening at 6 o'clock here in council chambers. We had several items. The first was the appointment of Robert Ruah as the Communications and Technology Director. That's on for first reading this evening. We look for passage and a start date of the 24th of March. His salary will be $117,000. That is a, going from 100, or from a part-time position, Barb Kegley, that was part-time to a full-time position. Council approved that in the budget earlier this year. And from my standpoint, I'm glad it is a full-time position because there's a lot of different work that can be done there, and I think that that is becoming our technology hub for the city. And the more that the city can do technology, the much more efficient our government will be locally. We had, we have several job descriptions on for first reading and passage. First is the Assistant Public Works Director. That's just a updating the salary range. The next, Mr. Cause will have, because I do not support, the job description update for the Public Works Supervisor. We also have the first reading for the City Engineer job description. Hopefully, that, we can pass that on the 24th. I think the council has talked at length about the need to get a City Engineer here, and I know it has been budgeted. We also have wage increases for non-bargaining employees. That will be up for first reading. That's a 3% increase, a cost of living increase, that all the unions also received, that we look for passage for that on the 24th. We're also looking at the appointment of Police Officer Brian Kovalek on the 24th. And we do have another suspension of the rule for the police department. These are part-time employees, police officers and dispatchers who receive, because of their length of service, that they have had. We feel that they deserve an additional amount of money. We passed this ordinance, I believe, last year or the year before to allow that, so we're just updating that for all those. There's only four employees with that. So that is a suspension of the rule. That also came out of the committee. I believe that that is hit for a suspension of the rule on, for the Human Resource Committee.
Thank you for the details. Any questions? Mr. Cause?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. As Mr. Zubor was stating, I'll be handling ordinance number 25-58, and I'll be asking for suspension of the rule on that. Mayor, do you want to talk to your request that this be passed tonight? You made a good presentation at the earlier meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. So the supervisor position for the Public Works Department is a position where we currently don't have. And we have, our public works people go out and they work on projects. Currently, they don't have direct supervision for that. As Mr. Liskovic, our Public Works Director, indicated earlier, we have a ratio of one supervisor for 30 individuals. I can tell you from police department perspective, it was usually one for five, one to seven. For public works, one to 15. But we currently don't have that. This supervisor, then, will be direct supervisors for all the public works people that are out in the field doing their work. They'll manage the projects in the field, they'll provide support, they'll provide oversight in all that work, they'll provide information on best practices, making sure things are done properly to save money and create efficiency. So this position for us in the Public Works Department in the city is vitally important. It's important that we advertise that position and try to get it out as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Zubor, for having the meeting while I wasn't there. I intend upon supporting the suspension of the rules for the supervisor position, but I again want to sound the alarm about the fact that we need a City Engineer, and we need a City Engineer sooner than later. So I'd like to see us get that moving and get somebody, get some interviews going, because we need a City Engineer to run that department and the folks that are down there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on then to Mr. Cause with Public Safety and Health. Sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. The next meeting of the Public Safety and Health Committee will be on Tuesday, March the 18th at 7:00 PM. This is a change from the 6:00 PM that we had originally posted it at. We will have the agenda put out later this week. The reason that we did the change on this was because at 6:00 PM, we're inviting the residents in from the Hanford and Liberty Rose and those affected areas. We've had a number of public discussions with regards to the traffic flow in that area, and we've, the administration has settled on a company that will be doing the traffic study for the city. And we wanted, as we told those residents, when we get, when we determine who that company is going to be, we want to bring the residents in, we want to bring the company in, we want to bring the members of council in, the administration, and allow for a free-form discussion on the scope of that work and what they can expect. Last week, the mayor had a meeting with his administration with Trans Systems, and they will be able to be here at that meeting on the 18th. That is going to be a town hall-style meeting. We are going to do it, again, a very free-form style of meeting. It's not going to be a rigid committee meeting. So we want a good back and forth with the residents, the administration, and the company. I did speak to Mr. Shamir about this earlier this week, and he had requested that, well in advance of that meeting, that a scope of work be provided, not only to him, but to the members of council as well, too. And the mayor advised the other day that that scope of work, per the company, will be available to us this week. So we'll have it several days in advance, at least, that we can be able to review. So I know that we reached out to Mr. Orlovsky, and through his networks of emails, and his folks, and Mr. Baker, and others, but if you're in that area, you're welcome to attend this meeting. And that will be at 6:00 PM. I do have a couple of--
Sir, give us the date again, because that also affects people on the west side of--
March the 18th at 6:00 PM. We'll hold that here in council chambers. So that will be at 6:00 PM. When that discussion wraps up, we're going to roll right into the Safety Committee meeting immediately after that. So I appreciate my colleagues' flexibility to be able to get both of those in on that same night. There will be, I'll say it again, there will be no votes or anything like that taken at that 6:00 PM meeting. So it's not going to be that kind. I do have several items on the agenda. I'll be asking for suspension of the rules on the purchase of the vehicles. We went into that quite a bit, not only at the committee meeting, but at the CCM. The reason for that is going to be with potential changes coming to the economy and prices could be affected. We wanted to lock in the prices that we received for those fire vehicles, fire department vehicles that are on the contract. And I would also like, I know that we have, this is probably the best time to do it. If I could ask Ms. Crossy to comment, where is it at? We received the fiscal officer certificate. Could you speak to that and how it affects this thing? Would you be able to speak to this and how it affects the two pieces of legislation that I had, that we were going to use bonds and notes for as a part of the purchase and the passage tonight of those two?
Yes. So this is a document that is needed and was prepared by bond counsel, in which I certify as fiscal director, the amount, of course, the not to exceed $3 million, but also the estimated life and useful years of the two fire trucks, which would be at least five years, and that the maximum maturity of the bonds is at least 10 years. So that is required for the bond issuance.
Great, thank you. And again, that is going to be for ordinance number 2538 for the purchase of Engine 5, and ordinance 2539, which is the Heavy Rescue 7. The third purchase, which is 2537 of the Medic 10, will be paid for out of the paramedic funds. And I believe that is, that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions for Mr. Cause, my colleagues? All right, then we're going to move on now to Public Service. The next Public Service meeting is going to be in April, April the 2nd, actually, at 5:30 in these chambers. And we have one item on our agenda that's requiring suspension of the rule, emergency passage. And you remember when we were without an engineer, right? So some of the engineering items got pushed back, and now we're up against the deadline of Mother Nature. So everybody knows that fish spawn, and the item that's before us is 25-53, is the Seandredging over at Miller Row Park, and it needs to get done before the fish spawn, and also so that we could open up the boat launch. We have, we're not the only one that that's on the contractor's agenda, so we want to bring it forward tonight. I'm hoping that my colleagues will pass this, so that it can go into effect tomorrow, so we can immediately get on to their schedule. Are there any questions about Public Service? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we will move on now to the Planning Commission. Mr. Smith?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. There is no report. Planning Commission did not meet this month. Thank you.
And they did not meet because there was no agenda--
Correct.
Okay. All right. But thank you. Mr. Mayor, Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you. The next meeting is March 26th. Last meeting on the 25th of February, there were two cases. One variance was granted for Jakeson Lake for an expansion, and one fence variance was tabled. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Mayor on ZBA? Okay, we're going to move on now to Mr. Shamir with Parks and Rec Commission.
Yes, this evening, we have one item on the agenda, and that's a mere whole appointment to the Parks and Rec Commission. And the next Parks and Rec Commission meeting will be held Wednesday, March 26th at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Shamir? We're going to move on now to other special committees. But he has a report from a special committee? Okay, I'm going to report on the Tree Commission. They're meeting, actually, this Wednesday, that's March the 12th, at 5:30 at the old Firehouse. And we're going to have a real quick meeting, because following it is going to be Mr. Mayor's meeting with the Town Hall over at the library. And we're just going to be discussing at the Tree Commission meeting, some ordinance changes we've been working on for the last two years. And again, everyone worked very, very hard to continue with Tree City USA, as Mr. Liskovic said, and also to go toward the growth awards, which very few communities qualify for, and Avon Lake, the last three years, has qualified for a growth award from the Arbor Foundation. Thank you. Any questions for the Tree Commission? Okay, we're going to now move on to audience participation. There's two times that the audience are invited to speak. The first time, this has to do with whatever's on tonight's agenda. And then at the end of the meeting, you can speak to any topic that you want to bring forward. Okay? Is there anyone that wants to come up and speak on any item that's on tonight's agenda? Come forward and just give us your name and the city that you're from. Thank you.
Gerald Phillips, Avon Lake, Concerned Citizen. Like to talk about the fiscal responsibility of this body. We've got a number of items that talk about positions that relate to the Engineering Department and the Public Works Department, and those two departments do work hand-in-hand to some degree. We've got a new position that we're trying to create, a Public Works Supervisor, which Mr. Zubor indicated he doesn't think is necessary, and I totally agree. Seems like we're creating positions, spending a lot of money, and nobody sits back and says, we have a limited budget, we have X amount of dollars, how do we prioritize those expenditures? We just figure we have a cookie jar and a candy jar, and we just give it out all the time. And I don't see any fiscal responsibility. I mean, this supervisor position, you've got to add 14% for PRS and benefits to it. So it's well over $100,000, even at the lower end. You can't do anything with the Public Works Department until you straighten out the Engineering Department, which, you know, many years ago, I dealt with it. I thought it was very reasonably structure-oriented and definitely friendly. I don't know why it got dismantled, okay? I don't. I'm sure I'm going to hear that it wasn't, but you know, I disagree. You've got to straighten out the-- Uh, you got to straighten out the engineering department. The engineer department should be totally separate from the public works. Public work should report to the engineer for certain, uh, expertise. The public work's supposed to be in charge of the, uh, of all pub, public projects. That's why we were supposedly hired somebody with qualifications for it, all right? Nothing against Mr. Lickovic, but, you know, I believe, you know, he's a little bit over his head. That's why we're adding positions, okay? Uh, I still want the 51 applications, Mayor. I want copies of them. I haven't got them. I want the six finalists, okay? Those resumes, and I want the questions asked to them. I don't have those public records requests. I want it by Friday, okay? Quit the stalling. I want a copy of the study that we spent $140,000 for and for all these positions that we talked about, uh, at, uh, HR Committee, all right? I mean, unfortunately, the late Curtis Williams was up here. He thought it was a waste of money, and, uh, I was of that opinion. You know, we, we got to hire somebody from Michigan to determine what's best for Cleveland when we can figure out what the comparables are. So, uh, we should, we should get fiscal responsibility before we keep spending a lot of money.
Anybody else like to come forward for tonight's agenda items? Come forward, give us your name and city that you're from, please.
William Zimmerman, beautiful Avon Lake, sometimes more beautiful than others. I'm a concerned citizen as well. Like to talk about the resignation of Sam Norman. This is a gentleman who gave more time to the committee than was ever requested. He always found it to be quite important. He had to give up the leadership role as the head of the EAB meeting because of personal And yet, because of what happened to Malachi in these chambers the other night, he found it important to make a statement and resign. Because you violated their civil rights. He went outside the box to let Mr. Koz make a statement in regards to the fact because he was on the device that we use to try to use checks and balances, because he had signed on. So he's resigning because of the way that you treated Malachi. Part of the things that amaze me are the double standards here. Because there was turnover then with Mr. Witt leaving the head of the EAB, another gentleman took over, we'll just call him Mike. And so he presented us with all of the new rules that you wanted him to follow. And one of the things I found ironic is that, in the absence of any rule upon the matter of business, the board shall be governed by Robert's Rules of Order. You don't even apply it to yourself. I've made these comments repeatedly that you don't follow Robert's rules, but you want this committee to do so. Double standard. Not very smart. All the above.
Anybody else like to come forward on tonight's agenda? Okay, we are going to move on then to motions. Are there any additions or deletions on the agenda with motions? Seeing none, we're going to go on to the very first motion. Mr. Koz?
Thank you, uh, Madam President. I move to instruct a clerk of counsel to return the form to the Division of Liquor Control in the matter of a liquor license transfer from Havon Lake P LLC to Al Coral Restaurant to LLC, doing business as Last Consuelas Mexican Restaurant G1 and Patio Avon Lake, indicating the city does not request a hearing.
In discussion?
In discussion. Um, I think that, um, the community is aware that there's been a transfer ownership at, uh, Last Consuelas, and this is a, um, this is a change from, uh, the new owner to, from the former owner to the new owner. Uh, we're having the new owner's liquor license being, uh, approved. The, um, police chief has had an opportunity to review this request, and he had no objections.
Thank you. Any further questions of Mr. Koz? Seeing none, uh, Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll. Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbach?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koz?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. It has passed. We're going to move on now to Mr. Shamir. Could you please, um, give us the next motion?
Sure. I move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Brooke Putziba to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term commencing March 11th, 2025, and expiring December 31st, 2027.
In discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Save your voice a little bit.
Thank you.
Uh, Brooke Patra Ziba, uh, is a resident of Ward 4, which will fill the requirement to have a representative on the records, or I'm sorry, the Parks and Recreation Committee from each ward. She moved to Avon Lake in 2024. She has, uh, been very active. She's married with two preschool children. She has education and experience in public relations, uh, marketing and project coordination. I was really impressed during our interview at the, um, breadth of her volunteer and activist. She is, uh, already on the Avon Lake Early Child PTA, has, uh, transferred her membership to the Junior League of Cleveland from Florida, and she's also starting her own women's philanthropy. So very well suited for the Parks and Recreation Commission. She'll bring that, uh, young parent perspective to it, which I think is important, so I highly recommend her.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Mrs. Ross, oh, Mr. Shamir?
I just would like to second the mayor's comments. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Mrs. Rossmarin, the roll. Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbach?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koz?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. This, too, has passed. Okay, I move to confirm the mayor's appointment of John Kilgore to the zoning board of appeals for a term commencing March 11th, 2025, and expiring December 31st, 2029. Uh, Mr. Kilgore has a professional resume, um, that's quite rich and broad in geotechnical, structural, and civil engineering fields. Uh, he worked for the Cleveland Metro Parks as the manager of facilities engineering and chief of engineering and design for 14 and a half years, for the city of Lakewood eight and a half years as a city engineer. Uh, prior to that, he was, uh, consulting on various engineering firms as a surveyor's helper, a geologist technician, EIT, PES, that's a professional engineer, civil structural engineer in heavy industry, including onsite position at NASA, NASA Glenn. He has an education of civil engineering, a bachelor of science in geology from Ohio University Athens. The first one was from Cleveland State. And I should say that, um, there's many different types of civil engineering. His education included hydrology, structures, water, and wastewater treatment and coastal engineering. His bachelor's science degree included sedimentology, glacial, and marine geology. He's quite embedded in the city of Avon Lake, involved in the Avon Lake Historical Society, Lorain County Board of Elections. He's a volunteer, member of the Board of Trustees of the Lakewood Historical Society previously. Previously, he was a voting location manager for Coyote County Board of Elections, and he was a former adult leader of Boy Scouts of America. Mr. Mayor, this is your appointment. Would you like to speak about additional items?
I think you pretty well covered it. Mr. Kilgore's here. We had a, uh, great discussion during the interview. Uh, he's extremely well-qualified, as you heard, for this position. I think he'll bring that perspective that, again, uh, we try to balance our boards and commissions out, and he's going to bring an excellent perspective from an engineer point of view. Thank you.
To the zoning board of appeals?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Any questions regarding this particular motion? Yes, sir?
Just a comment, maybe he could apply for the engineering position.
That went through my mind, I was 25 years younger.
You don't have to be 25 years younger.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Um, question on this, uh, does this now fulfill all the vacancies on that board?
Sir?
On the board of appeals?
Yeah.
Yes, I believe it does.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, any further questions or comments, my colleagues? Mrs. Rossmarin, please read the roll. Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbach?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koz?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. This, too, has passed. Mrs. Gentry, the next motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Shamir will go.
I'm sorry, oh, yes. Um, so, so that you know what I'm reading from, um, Mr. Shamir has been a vacant for a couple of times, and so, um, I had, um, Ms. Gentry take his position. This would be Mr. Shamir. Go ahead, Mr. Shamir.
Uh, I move to accept the resignation of Mr. Sam Norman as a member of the Environmental Affairs Advisory Board effective March 6, 2025.
Thank you. In discussion?
Yes, Mr. Norman served as a member of the EAB for four years in the role of member, vice chair, and chair. He has been instrumental in driving change at EAB. Mr. Norman's resignation is based on a viewpoint that there have been, there has been too much divisiveness and a lack of collaboration, and fundamentally, a lack of empathy. So I haven't had a conversation with Mr. Norman since this has come in, and, uh, I will reach out to him to, to have this conversation, but that is the basis for his resignation. I have not seen anything in here that relates to Mr. Malachi or anyone else, so I am going to reach out to Mr. Norman to, to get a better understanding of why this has come about. Thank you.
I did have an opportunity to speak to Mr. Norman over this weekend, and you're absolutely correct, it has nothing to do with, anything to do with Mr., with Mr. Witt's resignation, or not, uh, with his removal front by council. Had nothing to do with that at all. Um, thank you for the, for that clarification. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I, I just want to mention, I'm, I'm fortunate enough to call Sam Norman a friend of mine.
He's a friend.
Uh, he has served very well on the EAB. I'm, I'm sorry to see him go, but I understand his situation. And, uh, I also spoke with him recently, and I would not characterize his leaving having anything to do with Mr. Witt either. Thank you.
Right. And he has a lot of involvement. Um, for those of you that might be watching this, um, he has started, not only his, not only does he have his regular job, but he's also, um, with another individual here in Avon Lake, started up, uh, Grapevine, which is a wonderful, wonderful, um, publication. Yes, Mr. Koz?
Yeah, thank you, um, Madam President. I too want to echo what my colleagues are saying about the resignation of, uh, of Sam. Um, I'm disappointed to see him go. He's a bright guy. I mean, you can't not like the guy when you meet him. He, he's that kind of guy, and he has served the city, uh, very well. Um, and I hope that maybe someday in the future, when things are different and they calm down, he'll come back in some capacity, because he's got a lot to offer the city. He really does. Um, I too want to echo that I, I would be shocked if he was leaving because of the removal of Malachi Witt. I would be shocked to hear that. But I have not talked to Sam. Um, the removal of Malachi Witt was not a violation of his civil rights. Let's just put that out there. Um, additionally, um, this creates three vacancies on the environmental board, and, uh, when I was looking at the makeup of that board, um, and as we look to fill those vacancies, um, I noticed that all of those appointments are council appointments. And then going back to the previous appointment for the park and rec, um, just a moment ago, those are all mayoral appointments. And those two kind of stand out in my mind. There might be others, but most of our boards have a balance of council appointments and mayoral appointments, um, which I think helps to foster cooperation, um, between the two entities, mayor and council. So, um, I know we're just talking about the resignation letter, but I hope that council can have a discussion. I don't know what committee it would come out of, but that we look at some of these, like I said, park and rec, um, and add some council appointments to that. Environmental, add some, uh, mayoral appointments to that. I think a healthy balance, uh, has been, uh, a proven track record in this city, um, to get people working together from the two entities. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and there's some others that need to have a review, so that is something that can come up down the road. Thank you for bringing that up. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Shamir?
Yes, I would also like to comment that, uh, Mr. Norman not only has those roles, he also serves on the board of CRS, so he has a very full plate. Thank you.
And he travels internationally with his jaw. Yes, and he's a, also, he's a good friend, yes. Mr. Arnold?
No, I just wanted to, uh, say, I, I met, I met Sam. I know Ms. Sam 15 years ago when we, when I was a member of Kiwanis Club, and he was a member of Key Club in high school. So he is a great person. Hopefully, he can serve in some capacity in the future with another committee.
Thank you, sir.
Or come back. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I think we're at the time. Mrs. Rossmarin, for the roll. Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbach?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Koz?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. This has passed. Uh, Mr. Zuber, will you take on the next motion, please?
I move to accept the resignation of Recreation Facilities Man, Manager Michael Crawl due to his retirement effective February 28th, 2025.
Thank you. In discussion?
Uh, Mr. Crawl was a dedicated employee. I know that he was loved by many down at the Old Firehouse. I'm sure that the mayor has, uh, a few comments about his appoint, or his resignation.
Mr. Mayor?
Retirement.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you. Uh, yes, Mike Crawl, um, has served the city very well in his capacity, working as the facilities manager for the, uh, Parks and Rec, uh, which really means he handles the senior center and the, um, anchor facilities. I will tell you from my time volunteering, when we do the lunches for the seniors, that he is well-loved by all, and, uh, they really are going to miss him. We are in the process of, uh, hiring his replacement. I think we've had it narrowed down, but those are big shoes to fill, and Mike has done a great job. And we plan on having Mike, uh, possibly still work with the city. He does graphic arts, as, as many of you know. He's done a lot of graphic arts for the city, and we would be contracting with him if needed to continue that excellent service he provided for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Koz?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Madam Chair. I too want to wish Mike, uh, happy retirement and sad to see him go. Uh, another just great employee, just such a likable guy, and so helpful for that department and the seniors down there. I personally heard from seniors that just rave about Mike and just the attention that he gives and the kindness that he has. Um, the mayor mentioned his, uh, his other major skill, which I don't know if the public, uh, really knew that that was him, but all of those great, uh, graphic designs and all of those flyers and the things that you see on the website, whether it's Boo by the Woods or the, uh, the Eclipse, all of that artwork and stuff, uh, almost all of that was designed by Mike. He's extremely talented with that. So I'm glad that there's at least a thought that, uh, we could retain his services in some way going forward, because he really does add a lot, and, uh, the, the things that they put out with that department, um, it's impressive and it looks, uh, it looks high-quality, so I hope that, uh, we can retain him in some way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, I'd like to jump on what you've just been saying. So you know the cutouts at the holiday time? Um, he created all of those, and during, um, Halloween and, and other times, whenever we have cutouts by the service department or by the fire department or in the parks, he created all of those. Um, I'd also like to share that, uh, he brought in the Parkinson's, um, assisting group I'd also like to share that, uh, he brought in the Parkinson's, um, assisting group, and also interconnected with United Church of Christ, their, their dementia programs for families, um, very sensitive, he's well-liked, the, the, the senior population feels very safe and very secure with him, and he has this instinct, he works so well with Patty, they have this instinct, when someone hasn't shown up, they follow up to make sure that they're all right, sometimes food is taken out to their home, he's just a, a marvelous employee, he will be, he will be missed. We're at the time now for the roll call, Mrs. Ross Mearon. Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. We're at the time now for legislation, are there any additions or deletions? Additions or deletions? Seeing none, we're going to move on now to the third reading. Uh, Mrs. Ross Mearon, read by title only, Resolution Number 25 dash 23.
A resolution authorizing and affirming the authority of the Finance Director for the City of Avon Lake to request changes on banking accounts held by public depositories in accordance with Codified Ordinance Section 232.04.
Mr. Zuber?
I move for passage of Resolution 2523.
In discussion?
This was a request of the Finance Director, this ordinance is, gives her some blanket authority to give to any, uh, entities that contact her and want to make sure that she has the ability to do, to work on the bank accounts and that she is the person that we have designated to do our banking, and that's why we're voting on it today.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Zuber? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Ross Mearon, the roll, please. Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed, we're now at the second readings. Um, Mrs. Ross Mearon, read by ordinance only, by title only, ordinance number 25 dash 32.
An ordinance amending certain sections of Codified Ordinance, Chapter 260, employees generally.
Thank you, Mr. Zuber?
I move for the suspension of the council rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Ross Mearon, the roll. Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh? Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Zuber?
I move for passage of ordinance number 2532.
In discussion?
This updates to our Chapter 260 to give the, uh, employees, non-bargaining employees, basically, who are full-time, the same benefits as received by the, uh, that were in the contracts for the bargaining employees, that were made changes, and it, and it's basically, in general, an updating of it to, uh, bring it up forward to date.
Thank you, any discussion from any other council members? Seeing none, Mrs. Ross Mearon, the roll. Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, this has passed. Mrs. Ross Mearon, read by title only, ordinance number 25 dash 35.
An ordinance adopting the City of Avon Lake disaster plan.
Okay, Mr. Cos?
Thank you, uh, Madam President, uh, this is the second reading of ordinance number 2535. Um, this is, uh, an item that came out of the Safety Committee, uh, after much debate and discussion, um, with a unanimous vote, and, uh, this was put together by the Safety Forces, led by, uh, Fire Chief Jeremy Betza, who updated the, uh, the city's disaster plan. I plan, well, we're going to go the full three readings on this, so I'll be asking for passage next week.
Very good, thank you. Any questions by our colleagues? Seeing none, we're going to move on now, Mrs. Ross Mearon, read by title only, ordinance number 25 dash 36.
An ordinance amending Codified Ordinance Section 238.01, Community Disaster Plan.
Mr. Cos?
Thank you, uh, this is the companion piece to this, um, ordinance number 2536, so, as we are adopting the, uh, the new plan and the previous ordinance, uh, we have to adopt the code section on this. A couple things, primarily, we're going to be renaming this from the Community Disaster Plan to the Avon, City of Avon Lake Disaster Plan, and additionally, we'll be including language that, uh, it's going to mandate that the Public Safety and Health Committee, um, by no later than March, the March meeting of each calendar year, to review the document in whole and make, uh, recommendations for revisions, um, as requested by the Safety Director or the committee. That does not prevent additional, um, decisions from being made as necessary as determined by the Safety Director and the committee.
Thank you, so this is a living document also. Any comments from our colleagues? Seeing none, we're going to move on now to ordinance number 2537, Mrs. Ross Mearon, read by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase of a Medic 10 for the Fire Department and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Cos?
I move to suspend the council rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Ross Mearon? Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, it's passed. Mr. Cos?
I move for passage of ordinance number 25 dash 37.
In discussion?
In discussion, uh, again, this was, uh, an item that came out of the, uh, the committee meeting, um, with unanimous vote, we discussed this at the collective committee meeting as well, too, this is the purchase of the new Medic 10 ambulance for the Avon Lake Fire Department, uh, this will be from Atlantic Emergency Solutions, Inc., out of Manassas, Virginia, in the amount of $434,000. As I mentioned earlier in my report, uh, this is going to be paid for out of the EMS, line item.
Thank you, and it is through the Sourcewell Cooperative Program.
Yes, this and the additional ones that are coming up as well, too, and I think it's also important, this is going to go for the next two, is that the build-out on these is years away, so we're not getting this tomorrow or next year, so this and the next two are probably, you know, multiple years away at the earliest.
Right, any discussion from my colleagues? Okay, Mrs. Ross Mearon? Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, this too has passed. Ordinance number 25 dash 38, Mrs. Ross Mearon, read by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase of an Engine 5 for the Fire Department and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Cos?
I move to suspend the council rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Ross Mearon? Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh? Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, this has passed, Mr. Cos?
I move for passage of ordinance number 25 dash 38.
In discussion?
In discussion, uh, again, this is another item that came out of the committee with unanimous vote and, uh, went through the CCM, um, I mentioned at the start of this meeting why we're requesting suspension on all three of these, it's, um, to lock in these prices in the event that, uh, uh, there's changes to the economy, so we're looking to pass it on the second rather than the third readings. The total amount, uh, of this, uh, was $1,278,735, however, uh, we have a prepayment discount of $100,560 for a net total of $1,178, $1,178 and $175, sorry.
Thank you, any further discussion from my colleagues? Seeing none, Mrs. Ross Mearon, the roll. Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry? Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, this too has passed. Ordinance number 25 dash 39, Mrs. Ross Mearon, read by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase of a Heavy Rescue 7 for the Fire Department and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Cos?
I move to suspend the council rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Ross Mearon? Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. Mr. Cos?
I move for passage of ordinance number 25 dash 39.
In discussion?
Yes, again, um, this is, uh, a, a purchase from Atlantic Emergency Solutions, Inc., out of Manassas, Virginia, to purchase this vehicle for the, uh, Fire Department, this, uh, passed through the committee, went through the collective committee meeting, and the, um, the total amount of this vehicle is $1,516,220, less, uh, prepayment amount of $107,573.47 for a nut, net total of $1,408,646.53. Um, these, this item and the previous item, the Heavy Rescue and the, the one that I just did, the Engine 5, both of those would be paid out of the, uh, the sale of the bonds, which is what, uh, the Finance Director was referencing earlier in the meeting.
Thank you, so sale of the bonds, uh, for our public, does not mean we're coming before you for a tax item, it does not mean that we're coming to you for a vote, we're doing it internally. Thank you, any further discussion from anyone? Seeing none, uh, Mrs. Ross Mearon, the roll, please. Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, this too has passed. Uh, Resolution Number 2540, Mrs. Ross Mearon, read by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Avon Lake adopting Vision Zero and the Lorraine County Comprehensive Safety Action Plan.
Mr. Cos?
Thank you, uh, this is the second of three readings of Resolution Number 25 dash 40. What we're looking to do with, with this document, first off, this is an item that, again, passed out of the Safety Committee meeting, um, and gone through the CCM as well, too. The Lorraine County Board of Health, um, is applying as a county for, um, some funding that would increase safety techniques and safety equipment that could be dispersed throughout, uh, municipalities in the county. In order to become eligible for this, um, county-wide, uh, availability of, of these funds and these, um, these types of safety improvements, um, communities here in the city need to sign on to the, uh, Vision Zero and Lorraine County Comprehensive Safety Action Plan, um, and that is what we are going to do. Once we become a part of this with the other communities here in the county, um, we will be able to apply for these safety funds, and, um, if we're approved, we're a part of it, and we can start to get these items out into the community for public safety.
Mr. Cos, would you please, on page two, read Section Number One and Section Number Two for the public?
On page two?
Yes, of that particular ordinance.
On the top of the page?
Resolution at the bottom.
Oh, that part. Yes, Section Number One, uh, "The City of Avon Lake adopts the goal of zero traffic deaths and serious injuries, stating that no loss of life or serious injury is acceptable on our streets." In Section Two, "The City of Avon Lake adopts the goal of eliminating traffic deaths and serious injuries by 2040, and endorses Vision Zero as a comprehensive and holistic approach to achieving this goal."
Thank you, sir, any further comments or questions for Mr. Cos? Seeing none, Mrs. Ross Mearon, please read the roll.
Nope, we're not voting on it.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's, it's, it's not, it's just-
We're going to do third reading.
We're going to do another reading.
We'll do one more reading.
Thank you, sir, thank you, thank you, we're on a roll here. Okay, ordinance number 2546, uh, Mrs. Ross Mearon, read by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the creation of the Probation Services Fund and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zuber?
I move for the suspension of the council rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Ross Mearon, the roll. Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. Mr. Zuber?
I move for, uh, passage of ordinance number 2546.
In discussion?
Uh, this is a request by Judge Manning for a new fund for probation services, and in the discussions I had with her prior to the first reading, she had requested that we pass this on the second reading.
Thank you, sir. Oh, on the second reading, okay, thank you. Any further discussion, yes, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, thank you, um, I'm sure some of you know, I think that a probation department is needed down at that court, uh, I've thought that for a long time, so I'm glad to see, uh, that's starting to come to fruition, thank you.
Good point, anybody else? Yes, Mr. Herbert?
I echo that, the courts has gotten a lot of cases and a lot of things, it's grown from Avon Lake and Alon and Sheffield, it's just time to have a probation department in the communal court.
Right, and so everybody understands, m- most of the cases come in from Avon, the City of Avon, and through that court? Okay, um, Mrs. Ross Mearon? Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh? Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith? Thank you, it has passed. Um, ordinance number 25 dash 47, Mrs. Ross Mearon, read by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the creation of the Special Projects Fund and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zuber?
I move for the suspension of the council rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Ross Mearon? Mr. Zuber?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh?
Yes.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. Mr. Zuber?
I move for passage of ordinance number 2547.
In discussion?
Uh, this is the second of three funds that the, uh, Judd had requested that we set up for her as she is, um, moving forward to upgrade, upgrade the court.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Zuber, any comments? Any questions for Mr. Zuber, any comments? Saying none, Mrs. Rosmiren?
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Thank you, this has passed. Ordinance number 25-48, Mrs. Rosmiren, read by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the creation of the Legal Research and Court Computerization Fund and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zuber?
I move for the suspension of the council rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rosmiren?
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Thank you, it has passed. Mr. Zuber?
I move for passage of ordinance number 2548.
In discussion?
This is the third and final fund requested by Judge Manning, and as I said, in the first one, she had requested that this be passed on second reading in the discussion that I had with her several weeks ago.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Saying none, Mrs. Rosmiren, the roll.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Thank you, this has passed. Now we're down to first readings. Mrs. Rosmiren, read by title only, ordinance number 25-52.
An ordinance authorizing a donation to Village Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zuber?
I move the first reading of ordinance number 2552.
In discussion?
This is a donation to the Village Project. They came in and gave a presentation to city council. They had requested that we make a donation. This is the amount that was budgeted. When we had discussion at the Finance Committee last week, we had $8,000 listed as that was the prior donation that we made a couple of years ago, so we have updated it to $10,000, the budgeted amount. We'll have further discussion on this at the Collective Committee meeting next week, and I would look for passage on the second reading.
Right, and you want to share with everybody what the Village Project is?
The Village Project, what it does is it takes meals to families of cancer victims during their treatments in Avon, Avon Lake, Bay Village, and Westlake.
Thank you, sir. It's a very well-known and generous organization. Any further discussion from anyone? Okay, we will move on. Mrs. Rosmiren, read by title only, ordinance number 25-53.
An ordinance awarding a contract for the Miller Road Park sand dredging project to NGW Industrial LLC and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. I move for suspension of the rule requiring three readings. Mrs. Rosmiren?
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Thank you, that has passed. I move for passage of temporary ordinance number 25-53. And in discussion, the city engineer prepared plans and specifications for the Miller Road Park sand dredging project. He invited bidders to come. They were received, the bids were opened and tabulated by the city engineer. NGW Industrial LLC of Sheffield Village is the lowest and best responsive bid after this process, and it was in the sum of $73,415. As was mentioned earlier, this is declared to be an emergency measure, the emergency being the necessity of dredging the sand from the boat launch area at Miller Road Park before the fish spawning season and the upcoming boating season to ensure safe boating, thus is for the public health, safety, and welfare. Further discussion? Saying none, Mrs. Rosmiren, the roll.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Thank you, this too has passed. Ordinance number 25-54, Mrs. Rosmiren, please read by title only.
An ordinance approving wage increases for certain part-time, non-bargaining police officers and dispatchers. Repeal in ordinance number 23-116 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zuber?
I move for the suspension of the council rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rosmiren, the roll.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This has passed. Mr. Zuber?
I move for passage of ordinance 2554.
In discussion?
This came out of the Finance Committee this evening. We have had discussion about this in the past. These are permanent part-time police officers and dispatchers who have a great deal of time with the city as police officers and dispatchers. In a discussion with the police chief several years ago, we passed an ordinance that the chief can designate certain part-time people that work for the police department to get not just Step One, which is in the ordinance of the part-time, but an additional 10% above that for their length of service to the community.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mrs. Rosmiren, the roll.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Thank you, this has passed. Ordinance number 25-56, Mrs. Rosmiren, I'll read by title only. Did I miss one?
Yeah, yeah. Five, five.
Okay, I had a jump in mind. All right, I'm sorry. Ordinance number 25-55, Mrs. Rosmiren, read by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the finance director to transfer funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zuber?
I move for the suspension of the council rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rosmiren, the roll.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This has passed. Mr. Zuber?
I move for passage of ordinance number 2555.
Thank you. In discussion?
This is a transfer from the Capital Fund 205 to the Alps Playground Fund 446. The transfer is $1.675 million. This is to fund the building of the Alps Playground.
Thank you. Any further discussion from Mr. Zuber? Saying none, Mrs. Rosmiren, the roll.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Thank you, this has passed. Now, ordinance number 25-56, Mrs. Rosmiren, read by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Cyber Security and Infrastructure Security Agency of the Department of Homeland Security for cyber hygiene, continuous vulnerability scan and services, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Shamir?
Yes, I move for the suspension of the rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rosmiren, the roll.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
It has passed. Mr. Shamir?
Yes, the scope of this work effectively...
I move for passage?
Oh. I move for passage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, in discussion?
Yes, the scope of this program effectively identifies vulnerabilities of the city's network and systems and provide early warning of specific vulnerabilities to the city.
Yes, thank you. Any further discussion by anyone? Saying none, Mrs. Rosmiren, the roll.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Thank you, this too has passed. Ordinance number 25-57, Mrs. Rosmiren, read by title only.
An ordinance adopting a job description for the position of Assistant Public Works Director, establishing the qualifications and duties for said position, and repeal in ordinance number 24-156.
Mr. Zuber?
I move for the suspension of the council rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rosmiren, the roll.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Zuber?
I move for passage of ordinance number 2557.
In discussion?
This is a job, updated job description of a current, the current Assistant Public Works Director position, and what it does is it adds to the salary range and benefits.
Thank you. Just a moment, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, I was just checking with Mrs. Rosmiren on something. Any further discussion on 25-57? Mr. Zuber has called for motion, we have had discussion. Mrs. Rosmiren, the roll, please.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance number 25-58, Mrs. Rosmiren, read by title only.
An ordinance adopting a job description for the position of Public Works Supervisor, establishing the qualifications and duties for said position, and repeal in ordinance number 24-157R.
Mr. Cos?
Thank you, I move to suspend the council rule requiring three readings.
Mrs. Rosmiren, the roll.
Mr. Zuber.
No.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Thank you, this has passed. Mr. Cos?
Thank you, I move for passage of ordinance number 25-58.
In discussion?
In discussion. This was an item that was discussed at length in the prior Human Resource Committee meeting, and I'd like to turn this item over to the mayor to talk about this position a little bit more in-depth and the need for it and the suspension here tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. So this position is a direct supervisor for our public works team. This individual will be the one that would be direct contact when we have projects out on, in the field, and it would also be a direct supervisor. This is a position we've identified as being necessary to continue to provide the services that our public expects, and right now, that supervisors for this is also our assistant director, who has the job of not only being the assistant super director, but supervision of 30 individuals. So this direct position then would provide for that oversight and enable our other supervisor, I'm sorry, our other staff to do their jobs as indicated. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to comment, I moved into Avon Lake in the late 80s, and there were 9,000 people here, and I came on to council in 2008, and there were 11,000 and 13,000, it kept growing, and now we have 26,000. Our departments have about the same amount of individuals working for them in the same hierarchy and organizational chart back then as they do now. We hired in a consultant that gave us recommendations of how we could better serve our people, and that's what the city does, that's what the business we're in, is service, and I totally support this. The public works is under the Public Service Committee, which I chair, and I see it directly, and I understand why we need it, and I approve of this, and I will support it. Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Zuber?
Yeah, I did not support this position the first time we voted on the job description. I still don't support it, and I won't support the hiring of this person unless and until we have a city engineer. We need a city engineer, and that is crucial to our community. I think that once we do hire a city engineer, we will find that a lot of the duties that the public works director now falls under him and his assistant will go to the full-time city engineer and his staff. Unfortunately, I'm the only person at this table that has worked with a city engineer that was actually hired city engineer for the City of Avon Lake, an actual person, besides Mr. Smith, who was the law director. I should, I'm sorry, I should have said elected official, I'm sorry. But this is one of the three additional, over $100,000 additional employees that are going to be making over $100,000 this year that are budgeted. We have a city engineer, this position, also a municipal arborist.
Urban forester.
Urban forester. And I just think that if we would hire the urban forester and the engineer, we would find that there would be no need for this position to be hired. People talk about the study, the study didn't say to hire this person, the study said that we may need an additional person, management person. So I can't support this, and when this person is hired, I will not support them unless we have a city engineer already working for the city, and they too agree that this position is needed. Thank you.
Anybody else on council? Any further discussion? Is that, is your hand up?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't know if you were flagging me or not.
Nope.
Mrs. Rosmiren, the roll, please.
Mr. Zuber.
No.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Thank you. We move on to ordinance number 25-59. Mrs. Rosmiren, read by title only.
An ordinance adopting a job description for the position of city engineer, establishing the qualifications and duties for said position, and repeal in ordinance number 188-90.
Mr. Zuber?
I move the first reading of ordinance number 2559.
In discussion?
This is the job description for the city engineer. It is our hope that all the updates are done and we're able to pass this on the 24th. This was voted out of the HR committee this evening by a two-to-zero vote.
And, Mr. Zuber, can you explain why this is not a suspension of the rule tonight?
Because this is the first time we're seeing it.
Right, and there's updates that were made this morning by the administration that we haven't had a chance to review. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you. I also would like to see this moved along, because I'm a firm believer that we need a city engineer here as well. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Shamir?
I also agree with both Mr. Zuber and Mr. Smith that this has to be fast-tracked and moved along. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I appreciate the comments by council, and I completely agree that we want to get this position in place as soon as possible. I support all those statements. This is an extremely important position that we currently have been contracted out. Just want to reiterate that the city engineer will have a variety of tasks and responsibilities. There still will be occasions when we'll have to go outside and contract for engineering services, however, the most of the work will be done here. Our current contracted services really doesn't supply 40 hours a week, it's much, much less than that. So having a city engineer in place will enable us to catch up on the work and get it done much faster so that projects in the city can move faster and residents, you know, their permits can also be moved much quicker. Thank you.
Anybody else have discussion? I too support that we move this as a fast-track, as has been mentioned by my colleagues. If there had not been a change this morning, I believe that it would have come forward with suspension of the rule, we could have gone forward, so we could be advertising for this position. This is an exempt in-house city engineer that is needed, drastically needed, it's going to be saving the city money once this individual's here, but we do need to have the right individual in the right space. So, with that said, we are going to move on then to ordinance number 25-60. Mrs. Rosmiren, read by title only.
An ordinance approving wage increases for certain non-bargaining unit personnel and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zuber?
I move the first reading of ordinance number 2560.
In discussion?
This gives a 3% increase to the non-bargaining employees. This is the same that our union, unions negotiated for the increases for their employee. It's only for one year, because hopefully, once we get the pay ranges passed, later on this year, we'll be able to give raise based on merit and by what the administration believes to be people that are doing a good job, based on their evaluations.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, would you like to comment further on this particular ordinance that's before us?
Yeah, so our non-bargaining, I'm sorry, our bargaining units, collective bargaining units, all receive a 3% over three-year raise. We're looking to be fair and make sure that we take care of our non-bargaining people as well. This is basically a cost of living adjustment percentage that we're putting in place. And then as we establish our new salary ranges, then based upon some of the evaluations, we'll be able to make better recommendations on future increases in wages. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else? Any further discussion? Okay, then we're going to move on then to ordinance number 25 dash 61. Mrs. Rosmeyer, read by title only.
An ordinance confirming the mayor's appointment of Robert Rua to the position of Communications and Technology Director, establishing the rate of compensation for said position and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zuber?
I move the first reading of ordinance number 25-61.
In discussion.
We met Mr. Rua today. He's going to be coming to us from the Cleveland Library. We're looking forward to this full-time position. The director for this Communications and Technology Department has always been a part-time position. And I am glad to see that it is going to be a full-time position. I think with what is happening all over the world in technology and what that department now does, when it was first established, they did TV programming. Now they run all our internet, all our Facebook pages and numerous other things dealing with IT. And he comes to us, and I think he's going to be a good addition. As I said before, this goes, this is taken from a part-time to a full-time position. And his rate of pay will be $117,000 a year.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, would you like to further discuss the applicant that has come forward?
Yes, thank you. So Robert Rua, or Rob, comes to us from, again, the Kauai County Public Library where he has served for 17 years. He is currently their marketing director. He has also served as the communication coordinator. He has two degrees, both in English literature, bachelor's and a master's. In addition to that, he has worked in website development, project management, budget management. He's been a supervisor. I'd also like to add that he's also had training in leadership, which I believe is very important. He also is well-versed in technology, which as Mr. Zuber correctly indicated, is a growing part of this Communication and Technology Department, which is really why it has expanded and why we need a full-time position. He has experience in social media, website design, and a lot of technology which I don't understand, which is why we have him here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion from anyone? What I would like to add also, going along with what you just said, is that he also has a lean Six Sigma Green Belt through Case Western Reserve University Weather School of Management. He has been involved in a number of campaigns. And when I say campaigns, they are programming campaigns for the Cuyahoga County Library System. So he knows how to logistically pull different departments together and tell the story to keep the branding going forward. And I think today, this is a really good example of the good work that's being done here needs a voice. We need somebody who's going to be able to share that story with the residents of Avon Lake. And I'm real happy to bring Robert Rua forward. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Rosmeyer, and the roll. Oh, no, we don't have a roll. It's next week. I'm so excited. I want to go forward. In two weeks. I need to go forward. We met him tonight. He has a lot of personality, very energetic, and he also knows the technology, which is great. Okay, the next one is ordinance number 25 dash 62. Mrs. Rosmeyer, read by title only.
Before I read ordinance number 25-62, I want to acknowledge receipt of the fiscal officer certificate which was filed with me today. And council has been provided with copies and Finance Director Crossi spoke to it earlier, so I'd acknowledge that.
Thank you.
And then I will read the ordinance. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $3 million for the purpose of paying cost of acquiring, one, a heavy-duty rescue truck with impel chassis, and, two, a pumper truck with impel chassis, each for use by the city's fire department, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Zuber?
I move the first reading of ordinance number 25-62.
In discussion.
We've had long discussions since budget times last year in regards to, really, the one fire truck. I think that we brought the second fire truck forward based on the mayor and the fire chief's recommendation on the bill time. When we look at the replacement schedule, we realize that if we're going to replace this piece of equipment, we have to do it now and order it now based on the several years it's going to take to build it. And we had always had discussions about doing a bond sale for these two particular projects. I'll turn it over to the Finance Director if she has any other things that she wants to add.
Thank you, Mr. Zuber. Well, it's previously discussed with the interest rates of one-year notes and 10-year direct placement bonds approximately at the same rate at this time. This is unusual. The city is looking forward to taking the opportunity to go directly to the sale of direct placement bonds for these two fire vehicles. And after some detailed cost analysis, we've determined that the direct placement sale, rather than a lengthier public sale process, mitigates the risk of future manufacturer price increase of the fire trucks and possibly negative tariff impacts. So we would like to move forward with this. Bond Council has drafted tonight's legislation that you have before you for council's review for this bond issue, again, for direct placement sales of the bonds not to exceed $3 million. If council passes this legislation upon two readings, with the second reading being March 24th, this bond issue would close and receipt of funds would take place approximately April 9th, which is important because payment for the fire trucks taking place prior to May 1st would avoid the next round of price increases by the manufacturer and possibly avoids negative effects of possible upcoming tariffs. So time is crucial right now. The bond term sheet would be distributed to the banks for review tomorrow, March 11th, with bids due back by March 26th, would be after the date of the second reading. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Crossi? Or for Mr. Zuber? Thank you. So the plan is then for this to be the first reading tonight, and then the second reading on the 24th, and then we will be moving forward, correct?
Correct.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, we're at that time where we are done with our business here at the council. We're going to open it up to public input on any topic that you'd like to come forward and speak to. If you could come forward with your name and your city that you're representing only. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Narda Wagner, and I am a resident of Avon Lake. I am a voter, a taxpayer, and approximately 20 years ago, I served on the charter review committee, so I have some understanding of how our city works. I would like to thank you, Mr. Cos, last week. I wasn't here in person, but I did watch online. And I appreciate the things that you had to say regarding the recently dismissed today lawsuit against our mayor. The Speckle family has a longstanding history in the city of Avon Lake. And I think if you ask anyone, you'll find that there are no black marks on their name. And I am offended that our taxpayer money, time, resources have been and continue to be wasted defending these frivolous lawsuits that above all are trying to undermine our city charter and take down our city voted city leaders. Also not lost on me earlier was the hypocrisy of complaining about city spending while being responsible for costing the city thousands of dollars in lawyer fees, bogging down city resources with extensive requests of public records and so forth. I would like to thank you all, each and every one of you, whether I agree with you or not, for serving our city. I'd like to extend my apologies for what that service has cost some of you and your families. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward? Come on up. Your name and the city that you're from.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Strifler, Avon Lake. A lot of what I say is going to kind of reflect what she just said. I want to continue to reinforce the idea that the continuation of appeals in a baseless suit despite the knowledge that this choice will cost the city impressive amounts of money on top of the, I believe, $60,000 already spent is the biggest hypocrisy I've seen tonight. You can claim that your focus lies in the best interests of the city, but calling out our council is reckless for their interest in using the funds to smooth the functions of our public departments.
Excuse me, the young lady has the floor, please.
Thank you.
She's accusing me of stuff.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Please tell her not to refer to me.
Excuse me, sir. The young lady has the floor. Thank you.
While selfishly forcing them to throw money at defending their council is ridiculous. My intent is to appeal not to one or two, but to the Ohio citizens for honesty, integrity, and openness in government to take a moment to reflect on whether their concern is the integrity of our council or whether it is the continuation of their dislike for officials without adequate understanding of their roles and decision-making processes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward and speak on any topic tonight? Come on forward and give us your name and city that you represent, that you're from.
Gerald Phillips, Avon Lake, concerned citizen. We've talked about the issue of whether or not we needed to elect a law director rather than an appointed one. And there's no better example than the fact that in this recent litigation, Mr. Ebert was statutorily obligated to prosecute his boss, but yet he failed to do. And even under your charter, Article 4, Section 17, if you want to remove him, Gary Ebert would be the prosecuting attorney, and he would have to remove his boss. It's clearly a conflict of interest. I mean, Mr. Ebert was advised, he was requested to withdraw, he failed to do it. It's clear that rules of professional conduct, Mr. Ebert, 1.7 required you to be recused, and you had to withdraw. Our own codified ordinances, 23407 incorporates 1.7, Mr. Ebert, and yet you failed to do it. You even signed an affidavit in that proceeding, acting as a witness, violating rules of professional conduct 3.7. Under our codified ordinances, Mr. Ebert, 23402, gets to appoint outside counsel. He appoints his firm all the time. Even the judge indicated, how can he prosecute his boss? Under our charter, Section 37, his term is co-existent with the mayor who appoints him. So if he would remove Mr. Speckle, he'd be out of a job. He would lose his job. He wouldn't get his PRS that he's collecting as an employee, a pension under the state of Ohio, which I believe is illegal. He's triple-dipping. He's getting a wage as an employee, getting a pension, and he's getting profits from his law firm. Now, over the last five years, his law firm got $566,887.36 that he appointed as outside counsel. And for the five years, okay, from 2020 through 2024, he got $472,610.36. That's not counting his 14% PRS. His salary went up 82% in four years, from 2020 to 2024. 82%. Divided by four, that's 20%. Did you get a 20% increase in your pay? That's the problem with having an elected law director, okay, appointed by the mayor, not elected by the people. In this case, clearly indicated that conflict of interest. He should have recused himself, and he didn't. Now, we could talk about ethics, Mr. Cos. What about ethics, okay? What about the ethics of your law director? Appoints his own law firm for outside counsel for $566,000, Mr. Cos? We talk about ethics, we can talk about ethics in the buying by the law, Mr. Cos. You park your car on the side of the hydrant all the time, and you don't get cited because you're connected with the police officer and the chief. And you also violate the law by parking in an intersection, but you get a free pass, okay? The law should apply to everybody, Mr. Cos. You only get up here and grandstand when you want publicity. So let's talk about Article 4, Section 17. Mr. Cos gets up there and says it's an insult that five electors can remove a person because 8,000 put them in office. But your own charter gives five people the opportunity to remove them. Is that charter wrong? Should we get rid of that charter, Mr. Cos? Because it's only five people, not 8,000 people? Sounds like it's a hypocrite argument. You just make arguments just to grandstand, Mr. Cos. Let's talk about civil rights. You violated Mr. Malachi's rights with civil rights. You have a rule that says every agenda item can be voted, can be speaking upon by three minutes. That's your rule. You added something to the agenda, that right's still in force. We can go to, Mr. Ebert cited a case in the thing about limited public forum. Thank you, Mr. Ebert, because that case is right on point. You violated Mr. Malachi's right, you violated mine, and you violated Mr. Zimmerman. We had an opportunity to speak for three minutes, but council president decides, well, I'm not going to let you. Well, you know what, Jennifer? You don't get to determine First Amendment rights. You know that? You don't. You know, and then you want to wonder why people sue you. You constantly violate people's rights.
Anybody else like to come forward to speak on any topic tonight? Come on up. Give us your name and the city that you're from.
My name is Lisa Alphlin. I've lived in Avon Lake and have lived here most of my life. My husband Mike and I chose to raise our family here. My family has lived in Avon Lake for at least as far back as 1910. My grandmother's family lived in a farmhouse across from CEI. They fed the workers as it was being built. My grandfather came to Avon Lake to work at CEI when it opened. My father retired from CEI along with my grandmother and many uncles and aunts. My Uncle John Picken was a former Avon Lake mayor. My family's been involved in Avon Lake for a very long time. The older generations of my family are sad to see the CEI landmark disappear. The younger generations hope for something better in Avon Lake. We're pleased with what council has done towards reaching that goal. Thank you, former Mayor Zilka, current Mayor Speckle, and all council members and members of the community for all of your hard work on this project. I watched the weekly council meetings online. Over the last few months, I'm appalled at what I've witnessed from two so-called concerned citizens. I've reached out to and been approached by many different generations of Avon Lake residents, many of whom have attended or watched online council meetings, and they are disgusted by the disrespect, harassment, and ranting of these two concerned citizens. The residents of Avon Lake are irritated with the cost of the wasted city man-hours, and they're furious that taxpayer money is being wasted on these three, now two frivolous lawsuits. When I look up these two concerned citizens' actions and lengthy court records, it shows their true colors. When I look at our mayor and council's extensive, honest years of service to our community and our country, I'm honored to have them represent us on council. I stand with the majority of good, hard-working Avon Lake residents and support Mayor Speckle and our council. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward and speak on any topic?
Good evening. My name is Kurt Strifler.
Thank you.
And I live in Avon Lake. Mr. Cos, I want to thank you for your words earlier concerning Mr. Speckle and this council, concerning several folks here that say they're concerned, but I feel that they're just frivolous in what they bring to the table. I was in the courtroom last week and saw this gentleman disrespect a judge, trying to stand up for himself and trying to be counsel. He was not, he's not counsel in this situation. He was difficult with Mr. Ebert, and I've watched this go on for quite some time. I'm not interested in seeing it anymore. My understanding is these frivolous types of suits and legal actions are illegal. My understanding is he is an attorney, and I feel it should go up to the bar. Thank you.
Anybody else want to come forward on any topic? Give us your name and the city that you're from.
I'm John Kilgore, Avon Lake. First of all, I'd like to thank council and the mayor for my appointment to the zoning board of appeals. And I got a question concerning the city engineer position, the description that I read in the agenda. It was really, everything was fine in there, but the first line was what kind of struck me if I was going to apply for a job is, who's my boss? It says it's mayor and council, so, you know, that's eight people. And so I wondered if that's, you know, if that's been discussed or, you know, how practically, you know, that position would actually work. Who would they report to?
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody know?
Well, you're asking a question, and it's in draft form.
Okay.
And there's going to be a change, and I haven't seen the change.
Okay. Well, that's really my comment, having been in that position myself. And, you know, you really need to have a chain of command. Engineers are engineers, you know. We need you folks to kind of like be an interface with everybody else in the community, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else want to come forward?
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes, Mr. Zuber?
Just that, in my opinion, he would report to the mayor on a day-to-day basis. That would be his immediate supervisor. It's a little bit different with elected officials. Council are going to be contacting them on different items, not through the mayor. Like today, I texted Mr. Liskovit about something. So being elected official is a little bit different on how you integrate into with different people. But I would say his number-one person he would report to and get direction from would be the mayor.
Anyone else on any topic? Come forward, give us your name, the city that you live in.
William Zimmerman, Avon Lake. I'd like to discuss the fact that five people can remove the mayor. And there are council people. The five of you all gave out emails that said that you were in favor of delaying the second implosion because the wind direction is from the wrong direction. All five of you could vote to remove the mayor. Not just give an email giving your opinion about wind direction. But I believe you don't have the cajones to do it. And that's been the problem. He runs roughshod, gets to do what he wants. Says he's worried about a lawsuit from AL ERG. And said he would rather have the citizens of the city try to remove him because he doesn't care about that, only about a lawsuit from AL ERG. Did one transpire? No, because he let him go. Didn't cite him for causing an implosion before dawn and violated the noise ordinance as well. Law director didn't cite him. Chief of Police didn't cite him. Got away scot-free because he was worried about a lawsuit that was going to come from AL ERG. So, because the five of you got together and made your point, although I don't know why they didn't, or they didn't care, or they didn't see it, or whatever the matter be. But the point again is, is that you have the opportunity to do that. But you won't. So my biggest concern in all of this is, has everybody seen Mr. Shamir's tape from the fallout on the day of the second implosion? From the people who live on Chatham? Because that, to me, will tell you what really happened. It looked like it was snowing black soot. These people were kind enough to call Mr. Shamir and give it to him. And we've had a chance to see it if you go to his Ward 1 meetings. But I don't believe everybody's seen it yet. I don't believe most of the citizens of Avon Lake haven't seen it yet. And if you saw it, you'd be appalled, far more than you're appalled by the things that I do. You'd be appalled by the fact that this material is floating in the air at 5:30 in the morning. And the kids are going to be up walking to school in an hour and a half. But everybody has their own definition of appalling, just like Mr. Cos is offended. As Mr. Phillips stated, he parks his car next to the intersection at Berkshire and Redwood all the time. I call the police. I've met police officers down the street from there, because I live down the street from there, to discuss the matter, that he's violating the law. And yet, they don't do anything. Because of his position potentially here, I don't believe that you can do that. That's against the rules, to use your position to benefit you or to have your son parked there, whoever. It's against the law. Should be held accountable. Very simple, just like Jennifer yourself. When the ex-council president Marty called, this will be the last person to speak tonight, I never got to speak. Violation of my civil rights. to speak tonight, I never got to speak, violation of my civil rights, because this is a democracy. I didn't get to speak. I approached you and told you that. You knew I was accurate and correct, but it didn't matter. That's why these people in Selma, Alabama, were fighting for their rights 45, 50 years ago, again, the weekend of their horrible beating by officers on horseback. It's all about civil rights. Someday, you guys will get yours.
Anybody else? Anybody else like to come forward and speak on any topic tonight? Okay, with that, Mr. Cos, I'm in need of a motion.
We have miscellaneous business and announcements.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have miscellaneous business and announcements.
I have, I have an announcement.
Yes, sir.
I failed to mention this in my earlier remarks with the law director, but I've got a copy of the judgment entry of dismissal of the case today. If any resident would like a copy of this, they can email me at decos@avonlake.org, or you can call me at 440-755-2985. Additionally, I also have all of the motions that were filed by all the parties, so you can get a clearer picture of what actually went on this past week with these court hearings, and the judge's decision and how he came to that decision. It's very, it's a very good read. It's very thorough, and very professionally written, of course, by the judge. So if anybody would like that, they're more than welcome to have that. And I guess the other announcement is, I'm kind of taken aback that I was just called out for grandstanding. What a world. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any miscellaneous business items, announcements? Now, we have time for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Mrs. Rossmarin, the role.
Mr. Zuber.
Yes.
Mr. Arnold.
Yes.
Mrs. Fenderbosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Cos.
Yes.
Mr. Shamir.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.